Okay. Now, we're ready for our statements in our round robin. And Ms. Rice, if you could give five minutes for running. So what, up to five minutes for these statements from councilors? Yes, sir.
Go first. Go first.
Ms. Roman, go.
Because this is not going to take five minutes. Heather Hyer, Lieutenant J. Cullen, Trooper Pilot Burke Bates, DeAndre Harris. Those three people lost their lives and DeAndre is seriously injured. There are 21 others who are injured as well. I will try to list those as we get information from the hospital. And that will be on seavillecitizen.com. I wanted to write something inspirational tonight. But I'm having a great deal of difficulty getting through the anger and bewilderment of how an outside group can come into our town with such a message of hate.
We're going to suspend, guys, guys, everyone. The writers, listen, 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 listen. We're going to have to suspend the meeting. The right place for this is going to be Thursday night. We all do this for Thursday night. You're over and over.
You guys, if they don't talk, they're never going to go on camera and have us.
I'm going to start expelling anybody. So, okay, you're, okay, ma'am, you've been called to order. Called to order, called to order. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the officers to identify anybody who speaks out without being recognized. You have one chance. Then you have to be called to order, then you'll be removed. And we've got, folks will do this, we don't want to do this. We want to get through the meeting. We have 20 spots for Matters by Public. We also have a whole open-ended Matters by Public after the meeting. We also have a Town Hall meeting on Thursday. What's the alternative? Everybody just to shout and scream?
For you to be quiet, I want you to be quiet.
But that's not the rules. We don't do that.
I don't care about the rules!
You understand, you all can't be seen on camera. And then the council wants these rules to be maintained. This is not the way to go about. Okay, listen, so ma'am, you're going to have to, you've been called to order, so you'll have to be removed. And we're just going to have to do this. You're going to have to do this.
Fuck you!
We wanted to hear what everybody else.
Go talk!
The police did not work Saturday.
If we can't get it, shut it down! If we can't get it, shut it down!
Where were you? Where were you, man? Where were you?
Where were you? Where were you? You let people die!
Let me ask.
What did my ass do? Did you see that? That man hit him in the head? Did you see that? They're saying it! You watched them out to the future! You watched them out to the future! You all standing there watching! You all standing there watching them future! We got them video!
Yo, I said, Eric, you should watch it online. They don't want to know. Your parents didn't tell them my house. They don't like the sound. She loves my sister.
Protect our kids! Protect our kids!
All these people, I'm staying family to me.
No, I need you to listen to me. You all standing there talking cops, did not put a white man out when he showed off. Rachel, Rachel, God, help me! He yelled, he screamed, he carried guns, and you all allowed it. You didn't take justice, man.
You allowed it. You didn't take justice, man.
You don't care! You don't care!
You don't care!
You don't care! You don't care!
I would like to go back to the hospital and go through the patient. And then, and then, and then, do what I say. All right. Let's find them.
Fucking the door on.
The knocks are still on. So this voice, the voice needs to be heard because everybody feels very passionate all going on. So take your time to see.
Get the cameras out there! And get your ass, I need you to hear it. Get the cameras out there!
They all want to hear it.
They're stuck there. They want to hear it.
There has that pit room. There's there.
Jeff, when they come to your house for the rest of, midnight? Midnight 12:30, they're arrested at 12:00.
How many cop cars? How many cop cars came to his house? Go to Castler's house! Go to Castler's house!
We still have.
He doesn't know that's where they're at. They don't have to know that's where they're at. Justice for DeAndre!
Do you want to see him?
Justice for DeAndre! Justice for DeAndre! Justice for DeAndre! Why hasn't anyone been arrested? Why?
If they can protect the Nazis, then damn if they're up there to serve up. No, unless they're ready to arrest this whole auditorium, I say to hell with them.
We can speak, we can stay up here. They say we can continue as long as we just sit down, let everybody come up, say what they got to say. Trust and believe like everybody will hear.
We need Mike Singer back in the here. We need Mike Singer. We need him here. We need him here.
Turn the cameras back on!
Camera.
Camera. Turn the cameras on!
Turn the mic on! Turn the mic on now! Can you hear some? My cat's going to jail right now for murder.
Watch stream, watch stream! Watch streaming! Watch your eyes!
Big dog, for my husband, there you are. Say what you got to say. Mike, I tell you what you got to say.
Do it! Do it!
So, yo, the police are leaving. It's our meeting, let's talk. They hear it, trust me.
Why were your people watching? You're too alive. Why were your people watching?
Where were you? Where were you?
I don't know, man. I killed all these people. Don't do what they want. Don't do what they want. You ain't doing nothing. You watched them. You watched them get turned off. You let them do what they want. You let them do what they want. All the lights are turned off. So you can't talk, say nothing. Young boys are gone. You're just for the fun.
Hey, yo, fucking oppress them!
You guys lie, you lie like that. That's what you have. I thought they had a person, make one fuckin' hand move out.
The three people who have been taken out are, have been arrested and are being loaded into the paddy wagon.
Boo! Fuck you! Justice for DeAndre! Justice for DeAndre! Everybody, everybody, listen to him!
My chat!
My chat! My chat! My chat! Everybody, quiet!
We're working on it. Give me two minutes. Give me two minutes, we're working on it.
What does that mean? Go ahead, go ahead.
Forget what they're talking about, because they ran. They don't care. No matter how much we yell, they don't, they have a party out there right now while we got bigger issues going on. You hear me? Do they care? All this music playing, they having a good time out there, they forgot what happened.
They need to resign.
We are their bosses. We run them.
That's right.
We, all the people that's out here right now, we run them together. What they did, they didn't allow it to happen. They do not care, and they hope not to hear. They hope, now, if we understand that they don't care, we care for them. We care! We care! Please, this is our city. This is our city. And if the next time the Nazis want to come back, they got to rule away from it. They got to rule away from it.
Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands!
They're police!
Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands! Blood on your hands!
I would like to let you be heard. I have an idea. Resign!
Listen up! Yo, listen, please. We're going to bring all of the councilors out. Listen up. The regular agenda meeting or whatever, that part is canceled. We're going to allow everybody, everybody who is listening, to have at least a minute. All of the councilors that are going to be out, but listen, listen. We have about 200 to 300 people here. So we have to give everybody at least a minute. I don't care where you are, everybody's going to get to talk. We're not talking. All we're doing is listening, okay?
Are you going to let them go? Let them go! 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 Let them go!
Yeah, bring people to us.
You're the fucking mayor! You're the fucking mayor!
Let them go!
Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! Let them go! This'll stop when you bring them out.
Okay, okay, hold on. We're going to go talk to the officers and ask about.
Yeah, figure it out.
They're going to come through the 400, not the rest.
And that's it. Bring that back. Bring that back out.
While that's happening, let's get our line up so we can start talking, okay? While we're going to get like 300 people that want to talk. So we'll go look at how we bring them back, if we can do that, and then allow them to.
No, you can't. You can't. You can't do that.
You gotta let me do it.
Do it, do it.
Mr. Bellamy is, give me a second. Mr. Bellamy is volunteered to run the, what we're going to do is public comment. Everybody wants to talk for a minute. That could take, and that's what we want to do. Then we'll get back to the regular. But we need to establish, Ms. Rice here will keep the time, will have everybody lined up. It's probably the best way to do it. We will get through everybody, we will hear from you. And so that, but we need to be able to do that, okay?
Turn the cameras back on! Turn the cameras on!
The cameras are going back home when we start the meeting, okay? We got everybody.
We're going to restart our meeting. But is everyone okay with that? So everybody gets heard?
Yeah, do that.
Okay.
We're going to back in here.
All right. Let's line up, we're going to bring the council back, ladies, we good, all right? Because we get our, we get our, we good.
Thank you!
So, if we can, you, as you can, let's try to grab a seat and line up. All the councilors that are coming back out are working on getting the three people, okay? To bring them back in and then tell them.
Come on, Tyler. Yeah, we're not going to hit you when I come.
Run you over the car!
Yeah, we're not going to run you over the fucking car. We're not going to beat the shit out of you with a baton. Pepper spray you. Look at all these people. They are so scared of us. They're afraid, they work.
Police work today, ain't work Saturday. They got bad time ahead of them.
All coming here, all, they're trying to make fun of you.
What I want to say is much more, it's not what I'm saying. So you're better for fun. Lots more of this, I think, to make respect.
Do you want to just leave me out of this?
Maria has to come out. Now, today they want to run. Maybe they got something that can happen today, too. Today they want to arrest people. They were going piss, everything else was. They got away with it. Nothing happened. Nobody was beaten.
These people are the best. They ran down from Lee Park to assault people and ran back up in the park. They did the rest. That's what they did.
They went all in our neighborhoods and hurt people. Did everything, all of our people and did it.
Why didn't the people protect them instead of you?
No, all of my family in the city has gone through absolute shit.
Locked in a car. Y'all got awareness. And y'all don't do nothing about it. So did the police department. Y'all gonna answer for it, too? Y'all do nothing to the Department of Justice. Come here, right? You over there laughing and smirking, but you do know the Department of Justice. You do know that y'all on video, right? Y'all know that, right? Okay.
And not doing a thing, just watching everybody get hurt.
You have a question as to why that occurred? Why did that occur? Why didn't you come back and anybody?
Maybe the police is smirking, because maybe one of them going to go sodomize somebody tonight, too.
Maybe.
Maybe. Maybe.
You don't know.
It usually happens on the clock, right, fellas? Oh, okay. They use their locker room just to wait for you. She wasn't the first one raped. She was actually the first.
Indict the murderer! Indict Castler! I love this country! Castler the murderer! Castler the murderer! How about the terrorism? How about Italian violence? How about the murder?
Indict Richard Spencer, too. Hey, we'll take.
Oh, damn! Fuck Richard Spencer!
Are they here yet?
They got a warrant.
They can't handle it.
Get it, grateful!
You're going to have to hear it sometime.
That is true.
You run for yourself. I'm not going to help you. You guys will come out here now. I hope all y'all know you are not getting reelected, not a single one of you.
And that's what we need to do.
That's right. That's right.
Kathy Gell is knocking down tombstones to put a new house on it for her SIA, though. But she going to be a next pair, imagine that.
Oh, God, I guess. I don't know what to say.
What does Heather Hill have to say? What does Heather Hill have to say? Anything? You're not going to say anything to her, she might come over here and do this to you.
Yeah.
Mike says what we say. Oh, we're voting, oh, we're voting for black man, that is what I'm hearing, I'm feeling bad. Hold on, then, Mike, 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 Mike.
Thank you.
Then we trouble here.
Hey, hey, big dog, I don't wanna talk to the council, I wanna talk to the people in this room. We need to get organized, let's use this time to get organized. Here's the man, here's the man, here's the man, we demand a civilian review more than the police.
Hey, hey, everybody, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, we are beginning.
They're four child, three...
Ladies and councilmen, we are beginning. Just please line up, very clear. Excuse me.
Where are our people?
Excuse me, excuse me. We are very clear, just as we said earlier, all of the councillors come back. Because we have nearly three hundred people here, we have to zone for one minute so that everybody can have the opportunity to speak, okay? So please, line up if you will, and again, we cannot go over one minute because everyone has to have the opportunity to talk, okay?
Turn the cameras on!
The cameras are being turned on.
Yeah, they're turning them on.
The microphone's on, if you can't. Alright, who's first?
Where's the three people at? Where they at?
Yeah, where are our three people?
Why should we start till they're back?
Can you allow us to proceed with this portion?
We need our three brothers and sisters.
Yeah, definitely.
Take care of them, thank you.
Give them back!
You can handle that. Thank you. Can you get them back here? Fine, can we get them back here?
Alright, then I'll go. Everybody wants to talk.